Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions to the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Carter's Declaration of Emergency on March 15, 2020, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now, please rise for prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, we'll begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this City Council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now, just one minute, we'll begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Please call the roll.
This is roll call. Councillor Klingon.
Present.
Councillor Umbar.
Present.
Councillor White.
Yeah.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Present.
Councillor Strezzo.
Present.
Councillor Niedergang.
Here.
Councillor Davis.
Here.
Councillor Scott.
Here.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Councillor Rosetti.
Present.
And Councillor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, all 11 councils are present. We have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have two moments of silence.
Is that Councillor Klingon?
Yes, sir.
Please go ahead.
Sure. The first moment of silence is for Ms. Tanya Schuman. I knew Tanya Schuman growing up in Somerville. She grew up right in the Winter Hill area. She was a longtime partner of Eddie Hardy, who works for the city of Somerville, many, many ties to the community. She was actually living in Everett at her passing, but she was a very young woman. She survived by, she was beloved daughter of the late William Fahey and Judith Schuman, devoted sister of Chad Schuman and his wife Teresa Schuman of Malden, formerly of Somerville, and the late Daisy Tamar Schuman, the loving partner of Eddie Hardy, as I mentioned, and proud cherished mother of Alyssa, Matthew, and Brennan, devoted aunt to her nieces Katrina, Haley, Eva, Talia, Christiana, Gabrielle, Denny, Hope, CJ, Cash, Faith, Cameron, and many, many more, and many extended relatives. She also was especially, she took a special care of her cat Ivan and her many fish. She will truly be missed, and I just can't imagine what Eddie's going through right now with three kids left behind, and he's a really, really great guy, hard worker here in our city, and Tanya was just such a spark, such an amazing person. As I said, I thought she was like the most beautiful thing growing up when we were teenagers. She was definitely someone who made an impact on the community, and she will be missed, Mr. President. And also, in addition, I would like to remember Elizabeth Simeoni. As many of you remember, in the last couple of months, Holly Simeoni, her mom, has been fighting for PPE equipment and so on, advocating on her behalf. Well, Elizabeth, she's lost her battle to her lifelong conditions. She was 18 years old. She was just an amazing, amazing young woman. She, so Elizabeth Etta was her middle name, Simone of Somerville. She passed away peacefully at home on May 5, 2020, in the arms of her loving mother and Father John and Mother Holly, and her beloved sister Ava, while they sang her favorite song. She was a tragic granddaughter of Kemon and Sybil, Samos of Andover, formerly of, right in my ward on School Street, and the late Mary and George Simeoni of Somerville. And, you know, just a little bit more about Elizabeth. She loved life. She treasured every moment. I actually had the honor of going to a ceremony at the cemetery just a couple of days ago, and it was amazing, the number of people that turned out under these conditions. I mean, it was, obviously, everybody was spread out, so I mean, it looked like, I mean, there had to have been at least over 100 people there, which you can imagine, all spread out and couldn't really get close to the family, but were there in support. Everybody knows how long that, you know, Holly has advocated on behalf of Elizabeth, and just what a spark plug Elizabeth was. Holly told many funny stories about her favorite times, where like in the ambulances on the way to the hospital, when they get stuck. She loved the lights and the sirens and stuff. She's just really, really going to be missed. I don't think we've, we definitely haven't heard the last of her mom in her name and memory. I believe she'll be advocating for children with similar conditions, and so anyway, she will be missed, and I appreciate if you all take a moment of silence for her and her family today. Thank you.
Are there any other moments of silence? Hearing none, I have a few moments of silence. I just want to give a moment of silence to Noreen Foster of Otis Street, who passed away recently. She's a good friend of the Ragno Leoni family of Otis Street, who owned that street, and they're very proud of their Somerville heritage, and we're proud to be friends with Noreen. And I also want to give a moment of silence to a person who passed away in unpleasant apartments from COVID-19. We don't know the name because of HIPAA laws, as well as several other people. Up to 17 people now have passed away from COVID-19 in Somerville, so I would like to give a moment of silence to everyone in their families who passed away from COVID-19 this week. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Mr. Clark, next item. Mr. Clark, you there?
I'm sorry for that, Mr. President. Item number three is the approval of the regular minutes of the regular meeting of April 7.
This item is laid on the table.
Item number four is a public hearing at a grand location submitted by EverSource to install 25 feet of conduit in Smith Avenue from a pole to a point to pick up at 5 Smith Avenue.
Okay, so just so everyone in the audience knows, the way we deal with the public hearings now, nothing is going to be voted on tonight. We're going to leave the public hearing open until the next council meeting. I will vote on it then, so there won't be any votes tonight, but I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on the item? And I have Jackie Duffy. Jackie?
Hi, Jackie. Good evening, Jackie Duffy, EverSource. Would like to install 25 feet of conduit to provide electric service to 5 Smith Avenue.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience here to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will keep this public hearing open. And what date do we want to keep that open to, Mr. Clark?
Mr. President, let's keep this public hearing open until Friday, May 22.
Okay, the public hearing will remain open until Friday, May 22. Is there any discussion on the item? Seeing no discussion, the item will be laid on the table.
Item number five is a public hearing on a grand location submitted by EverSource to install 46 feet of conduit in Prospect Street from a pole to a point to pick up at 109 Prospect Street.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to discuss the item?
Jackie Duffy, EverSource. Would like to install 46 feet of conduit on Prospect Street to supply electric service to 109, 111 Prospect Street.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand signal if you need, if you want to speak. Seeing no further comment, I'll leave this public hearing open until Friday, May 22. Is there any councillor who wishes to speak on the item? Hearing none, the item will be laid on the table. Next item.
Item number six is a public hearing on a grand location submitted by Verizon to install 130 feet of conduit in Broadway from an existing manhole to a new handhole at the intersection of Broadway and Boston Ave.
All right, now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to discuss the item? Mr. Ross, you have the floor.
All right, good evening. Ross Bilidu, representing Verizon New England. As you stated, Verizon is looking to place one new 4-inch PVC conduit in a length of approximately 130 feet from an existing manhole 333 to a newly placed handhole. I understand that the handhole will be placed, if it has not been already, by AT&amp;T, which is to extend some new services that they are asking for Verizon.
Is there anyone else here to discuss the item? Seeing no discussion, I will keep this public hearing open until Friday, May 22. Is there anyone, any councillors have any comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councillor White.
Through you to the representative of Verizon. In our committee, we've had a concern about the drop lines from, basically, services disconnected, but the line still continued to the House. And Mr. McGeachran, the head of the DPW, has been in touch with some of the internet providers, and I'm just checking, one, Verizon is aware of that, and two, you know, to cooperate with Mr. McGeachran in addressing that situation?
No, I would personally not know any of that communications. I'm just representing for these two items tonight. That's not to say that somebody from Verizon hasn't been in contact with him and has not been working towards that. If I can get your email or something like that, I can get going in the right direction here and see if that communication has happened.
Okay, I appreciate it. You'll be able to get that from the city clerk, unless you want me to give it to you now. But it's easiest if you get it from the city clerk. But again, this is a concern that a number of members of the City Council have with regard to these services that are being terminated, yet there's wires continuing, there's wires hanging, so it's a problem that we would like to address. So, you know, I know you're representing them for these grants of location, and, you know, we try to cooperate, but this is, again, it's an ongoing problem. So what I would suggest is that you contact the higher-ups that you deal with and alert them to this problem, because again, it is a concern, and, you know, grants of location may be impacted if that concern is not appropriately addressed.
Understood. I will get that message to them. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing no further discussion, the item is laid on the table.
Item number seven, Mr. President, is a public hearing in a grand location submitted by Verizon to install 291 feet of conduit in South Street and Earl Street from an existing manhole to a new manhole and then on to a point to pick up at the rear of 111 South Street.
All right, now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone here to discuss the item?
Yes, again, Ross Bilidu, representing Verizon New England. As you stated, we're looking to place four new 4-inch conduits, approximately 291 feet in length. This also includes one new manhole. I understand there's a redevelopment project going on in this area. This project is to accommodate communication services for that project.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the item? Hearing no further discussion, I'll keep this public hearing open until Friday, May 22. Are there any comments from councillors? Hearing no discussion, this item will be laid on the table, and now we'll take a roll call vote on, we'll take the previous items off the table and have a roll call vote to refer them to the Committee of Licenses and Permits.
Mr. President, I don't believe they're being referred to the committee at this point, or is it your intention just to leave them on the table before the City Council for action at the next meeting?
What does the chair like to do, because I haven't been a part of the approval? Councillor White, did they just come to you for discussion?
Generally, they, on the public hearings, the record remains open, so technically it remains with the body, and then it's put on the agenda for two weeks, and assuming there are no adverse comments and that all the approvals are in place, generally, we approve them.
Okay, very good. Well, we'll leave these items laid on the table then. Next item.
Item number eight is an order submitted by Councillor Strezzo that the Director of Communications create signage to post citywide, reminding the public of the penalties and the public health risks associated with COVID-19 for littering, use masks, gloves, and wipes.
Councillor Strezzo.
Can I speak a moment on this, Mr. President?
Yep, you have the floor.
Thank you. So I submitted this order in an attempt to help stop the spread of and transmission of COVID-19, and I'm asking the Communications Department to create a public campaign that addresses this PPE litter issue with community signage or whatever other media sources they see fit. I am not pushing for fine enforcement at this time. I'm asking for a campaign that reminds the public not to litter, which is disposable masks, gloves, and disposable wipes. Many residents have observed that there are discarded masks and gloves throughout the community, along sidewalks and community paths, and I've done the math myself, and I typically count an average of five to 10 discarded PPE litter at a time. The PPE gloves can be bright colors, like yellow or purple, and some parents and grandparents I've heard from are afraid that the children are going to pick up the gloves and think it's a balloon, putting the discarded gloves into their mouths. Additionally, these PPE materials have been, have to be picked up by someone, and we put our city employees at risk with the discarded PPE litter. And if it rains before anyone gets a chance to pick it up, the PPE litter gets guided into our water system, and they're all bad options. So it's a public health risk, and that's why I put it forward.
Is there any further discussion on the item?
Mr. President.
Is that Councillor Klingon?
Yeah, just sort of, just to sort of weigh in on this particular item. I did put an order in last week asking the DPW to put designated receptacles out, and I did hear back from the DPW Commissioner that it then becomes a union issue. So in the same spirit, I think this would be a good way just to remind people, so hopefully to cut down on the litter and just discard them properly to begin with, and we won't have the issue. So thank you, Councillor Strezzo, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. And typically, what I've heard from DPW additionally is that the litter is sometimes circled around like grocery stores or grocery store parking lots as well, so I'm going to bring that attention too.
Is there any further discussion on the item?
Yes, on that point, Mr. President.
Councillor White. And if people could use the chat box, it's easier for me to identify people.
Oh, I'm sorry. So with regard to that, I'm wondering if either a communication could be sent or the Health Department to actually ask that the, you know, shopping areas or stores, maybe they have a receptacle, they place receptacle themselves there, so when folks are leaving the store, they have a place right there so they can dispose of it. So I would throw that out for consideration.
Yeah, I think this is something worth discussing in the Public Health and Safety Committee, so if there's no further discussion, I'll refer to Public Health and Safety. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Councillor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and this item will be laid on the table and referred to Public Health and Safety. Next item.
Pretty good. Item number nine is an order submitted by Councillor Ballantyne that the Director of SBCD and a representative from the MBTA discuss with the Committee on Open Space, Energy, and Environment the plan to recapture the trees and the green space lost after the decimation of the GLX forested corridor.
Councillor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I believe that the order is self-explanatory. However, I'd like to add that we all know reforestation of trees and plantings is the most effective way mitigation strategy is to fight global warming and help protect, you know, important species and rebuild the habitats, and also work as a natural retaining wall. So we know that the state land was clear cut of all the trees and the plantings along the GLX, so I'll be working with some community residents in the city to determine the best strategies to address this particular issue while the GLX construction is going on, and I'd like this referred to open space, environment, and energy. Thank you.
On the item, Councillor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to sign on and thank Councillor Ballantyne for bringing this. I was actually walking on Central Street today, looking at the devastated area there by the bridge, where they, as Councillor Ballantyne said, they just clear cut every single tree there. There's space that still hasn't been worked on, where it looks like they could have left trees, so yes, we really need to replant that area, and I'm still interested in finding out how this happened. You know, all of a sudden, one weekend, they were all gone. I didn't know anybody in the community who had heard about this. Thank you.
Councillor Ewan Campen, Scott, and White would like to sign on, and Councillor Klingon would like to comment, and Councillor Umbar would like to sign on, and Strezzo. The whole council would like to sign on.
Yeah, really quick, Mr. President, thank you, and thank you to Councillor Ballantyne for bringing this forward. I don't remember when we had the discussions, that I grew up in a house right next to the bridge on Sycamore Street, and oftentimes I would be on the telephone, you know, late nights, talking to friends, and it just, it just gave you the sense like you weren't even in the city, just having those trees there. But more importantly, thinking of my good councillor from Ward 3, Councillor Ewan Campen, and his love for birds, I do remember every now and then you'd see some really exotic birds that would come through on the migration, they would land there, and I'd love to see those birds have a place to stop on their way north in Somerville, so sign me on, please. Thank you.
Councillor Ewan Campen, do you see something the rest of us don't?
I knew Ben would be coming up here.
Councillor Umbar would like to comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councillor Ballantyne, you know, for bringing this. I still remember back two years ago when I had like a tree, a tree public hearing. Can you imagine, like with the City Council, just because of this massive, you know, like cutting of trees? So seeing this order, it's actually reassures me that, you know, we can actually bring people to accountability and then do the right thing. Thank you, Councillor Ballantyne.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the item? Hearing no further discussion. Councillor Ballantyne?
Mr. President, this could be referred to open space, environment, and energy. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, the item will be laid on the table and referred to open space, environment, and energy.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 10 is a resolution submitted by Councillor Ewan Campen, Strezzo, Davis, Ballantyne, Umbar, Niedergang, White, and the mayor, supporting Somerville restaurants by capping fees charged by third-party delivery services during the COVID-19 state of emergency.
Councillor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the issue here, as we all know, every single restaurant in Somerville, in the state, basically in the country, has either been forced to close its doors altogether, or if they've stayed open, they've switched entirely to pick up and delivery. So this is a massive reduction in revenue, but in addition, it means that a lot of businesses are, for the first time, they're now dependent on these third-party delivery apps. These are things like Grubhub, Uber Eats, DoorDash, companies like that, and these companies are incredibly popular, they're incredibly convenient on the consumer side, but in fact, many of them have really troubling histories of deceptive tactics used to draw revenue away from small businesses, and in the pandemic, it seems like this has gotten a lot worse. So I think many of us have been hearing these horror stories about third-party services charging really exorbitant fees to local restaurants, as high as 25, 30% of every order, which is an enormous burden for restaurants, especially when they have absolutely no in-person revenue because of the shutdown. So these are huge companies that, you know, individual restaurants are not in a position to negotiate with, and what many communities around the country have begun to do is to just place strict limits on how high those fees can be. Places like San Francisco and Washington DC have already done this, they've capped them at 15%. Other localities are considering it, and it seems that these companies are now becoming aware of the growing movement to try to put regulations on these to actually protect local businesses. There are some stories in the news, many of us have probably seen, Uber and Grubhub are trying to merge now, which is clearly an attempt to kind of get even more market share. They're kind of reading the winds on this. So the issue is that here in Massachusetts, individual cities, we do not have the legal authority to get in between two parties in a contract, such as a restaurant and a delivery app. So unfortunately, we are not in a position to just set a cap, but I believe that this is still something that we can do, which is not only to lend our support to statewide legislation, and thankfully, there is a bill pending now, which is 50/54 in the House, that would cap delivery fees for the duration of the pandemic. But the second thing, I think that this is an issue that we can play a role, just kind of spreading the word. This is something, I certainly wasn't aware of it until I started hearing from local restaurants, and I think that the message that we want to get out to everyone that is able is to order directly from a restaurant, to not go through these third-party apps whenever possible, go directly through the restaurant on their website by calling them on the phone, and whenever possible, to do takeout instead of delivery. So I want to thank all of you, all of my colleagues and folks in the mayor's office from Union Square Main Streets, who are doing everything they can to spread the word on this, and I'm hopeful that the state will take action, and in the meantime, I hope that folks will become aware of this issue. Thank you very much.
Councillor Rosetti would like to sign on, and I'd like to sign on, and then I have Councillor Klingon and Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to Councillor Ewan Campen. I would also like to sign on, and I'm extremely happy that you brought this forward, because I was also somebody who was not educated on the current situation, and after seeing your order come through the email, I actually was out talking to some businesses today on Winter Hill, and every single one of them was like, wow, if you could make that happen, that would be amazing. One even cited, I think, that Uber Eats was trying to charge them 35%, but I heard mostly across the board it was 30%, some 25s. But, you know, it's definitely a situation where it needs, we need to also like do the groundwork in terms of getting people to also to go and pick up too, because it, there's also, because I was told that there's a 30%, but there's also fees additionally with those services, so this is something I feel strongly about, and I'm happy to support at state level, and thank you for bringing it up.
All right, Councillor Scott would like to sign on, and then I have Councillor Davis, Ballantyne, and Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councillor Ewan Campen, for raising this issue. This is, you know, so when I, shame on me for not thinking of this earlier, when I saw your order and looked to some of the news reporting on a similar effort in Cambridge, I quickly got excited because it had reported that Cambridge City Council had actually passed an ordinance. I have since learned that that is actually not, appears the case, because I was ready to just draft an ordinance and submit it also tonight so that we could pass it next week in legislative matters and just have this be over. But I would love for the Solicitor's Office to advise us, you know, exactly what are our rights and powers that we have, you know, with regard to this issue, because I think we should do everything we can. I, I have heard directly from restaurant owners, a number of things, and this goes back even before COVID. I mean, that, these services have been predatory, um, even before this, uh, you know, this extraordinary situation. Um, they, they, you know, it's hard enough to, to afford the, the, you know, the cost of brick and mortar in some of our neighborhoods nowadays for restaurants, especially ones that are trying to get up off the ground. And, and these services, um, they have, from what I've been told, they have some very predatory type practices. They will, um, you know, they, they will try and sell advertising, they will try and sell premium spots, and if you don't sign up for their extra cost, in addition to the fee that they already charge, you know, your restaurant might go further down on the list. And so, um, you know, I, this is all hearsay, this is all what's been told to me from other folks, but, uh, you know, I, I certainly would like to at least have a conversation about, uh, what we might be able to do so that we can learn about this. Even after this, you know, God willing, when we get out of this scenario, I, I think it's important that everyone is, is, you know, operating on a fair playing field. And based on what I've been told, that's certainly not the case. So, uh, I support this order in the near term, support the state effort, and would like to pursue anything we can do on the local level. Thank you.
Counsel Ballantyne and Counsel Strezzo.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. So I appreciate, uh, yes, Counsel Ewan Campen for bringing this on. I know it is a very important issue for the, the local businesses, and, um, I think, uh, what has been mentioned here is, uh, we need to message as much as we can. I would actually, uh, uh, make a motion to ask that the, uh, Communications Department in their next update, uh, if possible, uh, encourage, uh, or economic development in their newsletter, that they encourage that we, um, um, support our local businesses and we, uh, call them directly and, uh, try to do takeout, uh, delivery, uh, as long as that's not illegal, that we should do something about that. I know there was quite a bit of chatter on the Davis Square, uh, group on Facebook, and a number of people, um, uh, are probably listening right now. So I think that the, the big message that we can't do anything on the local side, that we need to, at this moment, um, that we need to, uh, support what is trying to be done at the state level, which this resolution, uh, does. Uh, and any messaging of that could go out to our residents through economic development or through the city's, uh, update to, uh, contact these, um, uh, small businesses directly to try to do takeout would be helpful. Uh, thank you.
Counsel Ballantyne, are you making that motion now?
Yes.
Okay, um, so let's see. Uh, do you have all that, Counsel, uh, Mr. Clerk? Do you have the language there?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. It could be an amendment or it could be a separate late item submission.
Okay, so we have this, I'm gonna lay that, I'm gonna lay the, um, proposal on the table, and then we're gonna take up, we'll finish this item, and then we'll, uh, refer them both to legis, to Legislative Matters. And before that, Counsel Ballantyne, yes?
Yeah, Mr. President, why don't I submit a late order and I'll send it to Mr. Long right now?
That sounds great, thank you. And then we have Counsel Strezzo and Counsel Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I, I wanted to, I am going to, one moment, please, having a, okay. Thank you. Um, just hold on one second.
Do you want a moment? I'll give Counsel Davis the floor and come back to you.
Yeah, that, um, okay, a moment. I had a, uh, Mr. President, I had a question for, I had a question for, uh, Counsel Ewan Campen, through you.
Yes, uh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, do you know, do you know the, uh, can you talk a little bit more about the bill, uh, Bill 5054? And, uh, my, my concern is, supporting the local businesses, I, I'm so concerned that at a, our small businesses, if, if, how long it's going to take this, like, bills to get through, and how many small businesses and restaurants we're going to purge in the process. Do you know anything about the, the, where it is or the status of where it's going yet?
Counsel Ewan Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I sure wish, I, I, I would be a, I would be a much wiser man if I could, uh, predict the outcome of bills at the Massachusetts State House. No, I, I do not know.
Right, are there, is there success? Are people signing on to it, uh, are legislators signing on to it? Is there interest?
So through the President, um, if you go to the Mass Legislature website, you can see the list of petitioner, which is lengthy. Um, there, uh, wouldn't want to ballpark it, but it looks to me like approximately 50 cosponsors, but whether that means that this will go, I, I simply can't tell you. Um, I will say that, um, the, the city solicitor has opined to me, um, uh, on, on the, the specific reasons that under normal circumstances, Somerville could not act on this municipally. Um, I will certainly follow up with him, and I thank Counsel Davis for this suggestion, uh, whether the situation has changed under emergency acts. Um, a, as we all know, you know, in a state of emergency, there, there may be additional powers. Um, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Davis.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one more, uh, really quick point that I forgot to make. Um, the, I, one of the other things I've been told, and this is for people who are listening to this conversation and, and learning about these predatory practices, um, one of the other practices is that these, uh, some of these services will spoof restaurants' websites, and, and make it look like you're going to their website, but you're actually going to, you know, X, Y, Z delivery service, I don't know who it is, I don't want to name any names, but, uh, so just, you know, be careful, make sure you're going to the actual website of that business and, and ordering through them if you want to, uh, if you want to support them directly. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table and referred to Legislative Matters, and we will, um, Counsel Ballantyne withdraws her motion, and she's gonna add it as a late item. Uh, so next item.
Mr. President, I apologize, I'm gonna get better at this. Item number 11 is an item of unfinished business. It's a resolution submitted by Counsel Scott, supporting the House Resolution 702, which is the People's Justice Guarantee.
Are we keeping that laid on the table, Counsel Scott?
Yes, please.
All right, the item is laid on the table, next.
Item number 12 is, uh, is a business license application for a new extended hours license for Dunkin' Donuts at 282 Somerville Avenue, which would like to be open 24/7 for in-store and takeout service.
Does this also remain, or go ahead, Counsel Scott?
No, thank you. You know, this is something I've, I've been trying to contact the, uh, the applicant for quite some time on. I've had some conversations, uh, with office personnel. I'm very frustrated with the situation. Rather than have it laid before us, I'm gonna, uh, ask that we send this to the, uh, Committee on License and Permits, and, uh, that'll give us more room and more time to, uh, call this applicant before the council, and, uh, the chair and I can have a conversation with them.
Any further discussion on the item? Here are none, the item is laid on the table and referred to licenses and permits. Next item.
Item number 13 is, uh, one of the grants of location that was taken up last meeting. This one submitted by EverSource to install 56 feet of conduit near section of Linden Avenue and Elm Street from a pole to a point to pickup at 36 Elm Street.
On the item.
Hi, Jack Daphne EverSource.
Uh, yes, um, John, are we still doing a public hearing on this right now? Or is the public hearing closed?
The public, Mr. President, the public hearing period is closed. This is now simply before the City Council for action.
Okay, so sorry, Mr. Daphne, we can't take your, uh, Counsel White.
Thank you. As Chair of the Committee, I would ask the clerk, um, did we receive any comments? And is this now, uh, is it an appropriate time to, uh, grant this location?
Mr. President, no comments have been received, uh, on, on this or any of the other, uh, grants of location that are, that have been laid on the table.
Okay, I see, uh, go ahead, Counsel White.
Thank you. And just to follow up, John, there were a couple of them that weren't ripe yet, based on our discussion. Is this one all set to go forward?
Through you, Mr. President, this one's good to go. Items, the next two items are items that are not ready to go, but this item 13, uh, Elm Street, is, is ready for council's action if the council chooses to.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Niedergang has a comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have been in touch with the applicant, and I've been in touch with Mr. Clark, the gentleman who owns the property next to the applicant. Uh, they have had some, uh, issues. Uh, I've spoken to each of them many times over the last month. Uh, most recently, uh, the applicant, uh, Mr. Rogan, who, who, uh, owns 36 Elm, uh, sent an email to, uh, Mr. Clark and myself, uh, explaining three things and attaching several surveys and other documents. Uh, Mr. Clark did not respond. I called Mr. Clark, I have not heard back from him. To me, it looks like the applicant has taken satisfactory action to deal with the complaints from the abutter, and so I am in support of, uh, approving this. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the item? So items, let's see, 11 through 21, through 20 are ready to vote, is that correct, Counsel White or, Mr. Clerk?
Um, I'm sorry, I'll yield to the clerk.
Uh, Mr. President, item 11 was laid on the table. 12, uh, is, has been referred to the Committee on Licenses and Permits, that does not require a vote. Item 13 is now before the council for action. 14 and 15 should be laid on the table, and then, uh, then we've got, um, a, a communication or an order submitted by Counsel Ballantyne next.
Okay. All right, so let's lay this item on the table then, uh, and take up the next item.
Item number 14 and 15 are both grants of locations submitted by EverSource. 14 is for, uh-
I move to waive the readings of these two, since they're both gonna be kept on the table.
Okay, these are gonna remain on the table?
Correct.
Counsel White moves to waive the readings of the two items and lay them on the table? Next item.
All right, item number 16 is an order submitted by Counsel Ballantyne, Scott, Rosetti, Davis, McLaughlin, Niedergang, White, Hirsch, uh, Klingon, Ewan Campen, and Mbah. The Election Commissioner discussed mailing absentee applications to registered voters for the upcoming primary and general elections.
Counsel Strezzo would like to sign on to item number 16. Is there any discussion on this item? Here are no discussion, the item is laid, uh, yes?
Uh, Mr. President, it's Counsel Niedergang, I'd like to say something.
You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, sorry, I didn't put anything in the chat that's kind of caught me by surprise. I just wanted to share some information with the council. There's, uh, now a, a bill before the legislature, I actually believe there was supposed to be hearing about it today. It's HD 5075. Uh, this is about, uh, voting by mail. Uh, I, at least three of our four, uh, uh, members of our legislative delegation have, uh, are signed on as cosponsors. It seems to have a large number of cosponsors, and, uh, seems to have dropped some of the provisions in, uh, previous legislation that were, that might have been controversial, like making Election Day a holiday, which personally I think would be great, but might be difficult to do at this point. At any rate, it seems like there is a, uh, something, uh, legislation that has broad support, uh, in the legislature that is now being discussed on vote, vote by mail. So I just wanted to let, let people know that, and if you're interested, you can look into that, it's HD 5075. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Um, Counsel Klingon adds HD 5075. Um, seeing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table.
Item number 17 is, is a grant of location that-
Counsel White.
Thank you. I move to waive the readings of items 17 through 20, and again, it's based my understanding that there were no adverse comments and that, um, these are all ripe to go forward. Let me just, through the chair, ask the clerk if that's the case.
Mr. President, that is the case. These items, I, well, it's, it's up to the City Council, but I have had no comments at all from the public since the last, uh, since the public hearing, uh, last meeting.
Mr. President, based, based on that, I would, I would move to approve items 17, 18, 19, and 20.
All right, Counsel White moves to waive the readings of items number 17 through 20, move to approve, any discussion? Here are none, uh, these four items will be laid on the table, and then we'll take a roll call vote for all of them.
Mr. President, that brings us, that brings us to item 21, which is a communication from City Counselor Niedergang with a report on the discussions and decisions of the Traffic Commission during the first four months of 2020.
Counsel Niedergang.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just have a brief report. The Traffic Commission has held three meetings this year since the passage of the revised residential parking permit rules in December of 2019, which restricted parking permits to occupants of new developments in transit-oriented districts. There have only been two major actions voted by the commission. At the April 23rd meeting, the Traffic Commission voted to reduce speed limits on Broadway, Cameron Avenue, Middlesex Avenue, and Washington Street from 30 to 25 miles per hour. At the same meeting, the Traffic Commission voted to designate as 20 mile-per-hour safety zones, all are parts of three dozen streets in the areas of Union Square, Prospect Hill, and Gilman Square in Wards 2, 3, and 4. Other than these actions, the Traffic Commission made many routine decisions, such as removing parking spaces to enhance traffic safety, designating handicap spaces and loading zones, extending school pickup zones, changing bus stop areas, installing stop signs in certain intersections, allowing contra-flow bicycling on certain streets, and changes to streets and parking to accommodate green line extension construction activities, such as the school street bridge closure. So those are the exciting actions that the Traffic Commission has taken in the first third of this year. Thank you.
Any discussion on the communication? Here are no further discussion, this item will be laid on the table and placed on file. Uh, Mr. Clerk, are we ready to do, go ahead, I can hear you.
Mr. President, I would love to, uh, i, if, if you're up for it, I would love to, uh, conduct a, a roll call vote on the actions that have been laid on the table to date.
Yes, please, uh, and do we have the items that are gonna remain laid on the table separated?
Yes, Mr. President, my records show that items, we need, uh, this would be a roll call vote to approve items 3, 8, 9, 10, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, and then, and place item number 21, uh, Counsel Niedergang's committee report on file.
Very good. Any discussion on the roll call vote? Here are no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On the approval of those items and placing one of them on file, Counsel Klingon. Counselor Klingon, you're muted. Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counsel McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 10 councils have voted in favor of that motion, one is absent, that motion has been approved.
Very good, next item.
Mr. President, the next item is item number 22, which is a report of the Committee on Finance, which met on May 6th.
Counsel Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, Committee on Finance met on May 6th, uh, from 6:00 PM to just before 9:00 PM. to just before nine P.M. All councilors were present. In the interest of brevity, I'll go to the particular items first, without getting too far into the details on it. There's a request for transfer. It's, I have a housekeeping item from Parking Department to Engineering Department. There are, there was an order, approval of an order of taking for thirty-one Tough Street, which the president had expressed some concern about, having not heard of it earlier, but this is simply to clean up some legal paperwork for allowing some affordable housing construction to continue. And I will report that we did have some additional information come in about the Union Square Community Benefits contributions. We had a discussion with Director of Economic Development, and his feedback to us was that that was all set to go, that two positions were funded for one year, had available funding for one year from the community benefit contributions already received from the Union Square Master Developer, and that the RFP has not been completed yet. He was hoping to have that out in the next few weeks so that responsible organizations can apply and we can get those positions created with our community partners. So very, that's very exciting news and something I know the Union Square Neighborhood Council has been eagerly looking towards. So we also had a discussion. The only contentious item before us was repurposing two hundred thousand dollars in CPA funds to the Capital Projects Division for a, for design work on the rehabilitation of City Hall. This is not new money that is going to this effort. This is two hundred thousand dollars that was originally appropriated, or originally directed back in two thousand fifteen. The Director of Engineering came and presented his case on why he felt this was appropriate and necessary to do this design work. Again, this isn't new city funds that we're directing towards this. These are funds that were directed from the CPA back in two thousand and fifteen and are just being re-taught at the request of the Community Preservation Commission. So that was approved on a roll call vote of four to one, with Council Rosetti objecting with a basis in some of the previous conversations about City Hall, Plaza, and the parking, although of course, in response to the committee report, if Council Rosetti would like to address that in further detail, she's welcome to. Outside of that, we had a lot of conversation about addressing some questions that councilors had about budget items in general, like the E-N-M-O-N salaries account. We were joined by the mayor for a discussion that lasted, I'd say about an hour and a half of the meeting. I strongly encourage my colleagues to take a look at that if you haven't already. It's an excellent background in terms of what we're dealing with at the, both the city level and the state level. Really great conversation. I look forward to having the mayor join us again Monday night for a brief update on the outcome of some of those conversations that continue to go on regionally about what kind of relief the city can, can receive and what kind of legislative and regulatory relief we can get. There was a lot of conversation about city budget. It went into great detail, and I'm, I'm not going to begin to summarize it here. The report is online. The video is online. I highly recommend you watch it. The only thing I will report on was also a discussion about the procedure for, for this year's budget season. I'd like to get started on that as soon as possible, understanding that, you know, the city is still working very hard and still is not certain if they'll be bringing before us a one-month budget, a three-month budget, or a full-year budget. But with that said, whatever it is, we need to have time to look it over. This year, the committee discussed a change of procedure, and it's my intention to proceed with a method which will hopefully streamline the process and allow us to get to the substantive prioritization issues that we're going to have to have some large discussion about. So my intention is when the budget is presented to the city council, to have that received by the entire city council, either at, at the city council meeting where the item is presented, or in a separate committee of the whole meeting, where the administration will be able to present the budget, the substantive changes, and the general guiding principles behind it. I'd like to wait a few days to let people digest it, do their homework that this council is actually well-known for, and this committee in particular, and then we will take it into committee. Actually, at that point, we'll probably do one committee, the whole meeting, to get a public hearing for public feedback about those priorities and the general posture of the city government here, and then we'll take the item into committee for detailed discussion based on the homework that councilors on the Committee of Finance have. We'll go through departments and the usual line-by-line scrutiny, and hopefully get that done in two weeks or less, so that we can then bring it back to committee of the whole. We can give an update, an updated version with all those housekeeping items taken care of, a summary of what was addressed, and then a summary of what are still either contentious or policy-driven issues, obviously also informed by the public hearing and public feedback that we'll get during that time, so that the city council, as a committee of the whole, can deliberate on those, make their recommendations, and, and work hopefully collaboratively for the next ten days to two weeks with the administration, with the intention of arriving at a collaborative budget that we can all support prior to the end of June deadline. So with this, a lot of discussion went into it. I've talked to colleagues both in, in committee, and the president solicited feedback for members who aren't on the committee. I believe this is a good way to strike a balance between making sure we get everybody's voices heard, and that everybody's able to weigh in on these important issues that are obviously going to impact the city, both this year and for future years, while also streamlining it and actually leaving space and time for a collaborative process with the administration. So that's the intention at this point. Of course, there are still details to be laid out. What dates we're going to receive the budget, what dates we'll have meetings on, and what date for the public hearing, but I'm hoping to have that all ironed out in the next ten days to two weeks. And when I do, I will make sure that all of the councilors have that updated schedule and that they'll all be posted well in advance. So with that, I'd like to ask that the report be accepted as submitted, Mr. President.
Council Scott moves to accept the committee report as submitted. On that, Councilor Rosetti.
Mr. President, thank you. Through you to the Chair of Finance, Scott. Thank you very much for your leadership in this role. I, the first I've heard this evening, which I support, is that you want to do a public hearing before the committee begins to review the budget presented before us. Now, we've never done it that way before, so I just urge you to speak with the clerk now about the posting process and the proper notification so they can get that ball rolling. I, I, I would love to do that hearing at the beginning, and then we'll have to do a hearing at the end again. So the beginning public hearing is fast coming, so that needs to be worked on today. And then I have one other point, Mr. President. I don't know if the chair wants to respond to that or not.
No, I'm in absolute agreement. It's something that we're going to have to get on the schedule and get advertised promptly. I'm waiting on some feedback from the Audit and Department about when we can anticipate actually receiving the document. We can't have a hearing until we have a document to review. So I'll be following up with them today, tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. President, if I may, I just wanted to, I know the chair did recognize my vote of no on the funding for the City Hall, et cetera, planning, and I just wanted to publicly remind you all, the reasoning for the past five years, I've been really pushing on the fact that there is some form of parking that is needed for City Hall area, Central Hill Campus, Somerville High School, et cetera, for so many different reasons. And I sat back and waited, and after five years, last year during a meeting when the planning was becoming before us, more planning was coming before us for finance, and I then followed up with, okay, we've had five years of time, four and a half years of time to look into my desire and many others' desire of some form of parking. Is that in the plan? And the response was no. It was not indicated that it was necessary. So I will continue. I have voted no since then, since that statement on different funding requests for this area, and I will continue to vote no, because I still feel very passionately about the fact that we need parking. And I just wanted to have that in the record, because people may not remember why I voted no close to a year ago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion on the committee report? Here are no further discussion. We'll have a roll call vote on the committee report, and then we have a vote on, an item in the report. Mr. Clark, please call the roll for the committee report.
There's a roll call vote on approval of the Finance Committee report as submitted. On that item, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Valentine?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of that item. That committee report has been accepted.
All right. And now we have an item for a roll call vote?
That's correct, Mr. President. This is a roll call vote on the approval of item number two, two-ten-zero-sixty-eight, an order of taking for thirty-one Tough Street. On that item, Councilor Klingon.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to, just before that discussion on the item, just so people know, this was in my ward, and I support it. So please call the roll.
Sorry, Mr. President. On that item, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Valentine?
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo?
Um, I don't know enough about, about the, I could, sorry to interrupt the process, Mr. President, but could you just give me a quick summary of, of thirty-one Tough Street?
Yeah. So this is basically an item of land-taking. It's right next to the Affordable Housing Development on Tufts and Glen Street, and basically, we're taking this land so that we could potentially build more open space and affordable housing. So it's land that we already do exist, that we own, but through complications of who owns the deed, we're basically officially stating that we're taking this.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang?
Yes.
Councilor Davis?
Yes.
Councilor Scott?
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen?
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of that item. That item has now been approved.
All right. Next item.
Next, we have item number twenty-three, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, which met on April thirtieth. And should we take up item twenty-four as well?
Yes, let's do that.
And item twenty-four is a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, which met a week later on May seventh.
Council Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee's, Committee on Legislative Matters did meet on the two dates aforementioned. The, on the meeting of April thirtieth, we took up two items. One was revisions to the stormwater and engineering ordinances, essentially to create or to make a more robust stormwater ordinance, which is obviously both good for environmental reasons and also required by the EPA. And we had an extensive discussion. The minutes reflect that discussion. It was also brought up at the next meeting, so I will, I'll leave the further discussion for that. I do want to note that at this, the other item that we discussed in this meeting was a request that the city solicitor drafted ordinance requiring pollution mitigation for new housing that is built along transit roads and highways. And we actually requested that the solicitor look into not only housing, but any other buildings, frankly, you know, whatever extent that we can impose regulations on, you know, not to supersede the building code, but to require pollution control measures so that folks living in buildings that are built next to highways don't suffer the significant impact that we know is caused by pollution. So my, my hope is that we will have some response from the Solicitor's Office for our meeting of legislative matters that happens on May twenty-first, so stay tuned for that. I wanted to flag that because I think it's a very important issue personally, and I know a lot of other members are, care a lot about that as well. So that one is a priority. With that, I request that the report of April thirtieth be accepted as submitted.
Council Davis moves to accept the committee report as submitted. Any discussion? Here are none. This item will be laid on the table, and we'll take up the next vote of the item and then vote.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the next item, as the good clerk read, was the committee report on May seventh. All members were present. We did discuss a number of items at length. It was, I will say, it was, it felt good to really feel like we're, we're back to doing all of the business of, of the people of the city. There's, there's quite a backlog in, in the Committee on Legislative Matters, and so it was, it was good to, to dig back into these. When I, when I finish this report, I will ask that we take item thirty-one out of order, because item thirty-one is the, the two revision, the revisions to the two ordinances for stormwater and engineering. These were voted out of committee to be approved, subject to some, some tweaks and changes that the solicitor was going to make based on our discussion. They have been submitted by the administration for approval this evening. So I will, at the end of the, of the reading of the report, in whichever order it's supposed to happen, I can, I can never quite recall, but we will, we'll move to replace the, the proposed amendments in the, in the, in the report with the ones that were in item thirteen to, in hopes that they will be approved. So, spoiler alert, we talked about the stormwater ordinances. The, the minutes are detailed enough. There's not a whole lot of magic here, basically. You can't connect stuff to the sewer, and you can't, you know, you can't pave all over your lot and cause runoffs, and there's, there's a lot of detail that goes into it. The minutes from last, from the last meeting to this meeting are somewhat detailed, and folks can look at the ordinance themselves. These are, as I mentioned, these are both the right thing to do, good for our immediate environment, and also a requirement from the, the environmental agencies that oversee the city's operations. So we are required to do both those. The, the, as I said, the, the proposed amendments to the two ordinances were recommended for approval, subject to changes that will be made by the Solicitor's Office, which we have in thirty-one. The other items that we discussed were some, some tweaks to the condominium conversion ordinance that were recommended by the Office of Housing Stability. We had a brief discussion of that. The, the minutes detail that discussion, and, and the ordinance, revised ordinances in the minutes, so folks can take a look at that. For the most part, this is just some, some drafting cleanup and some, some, some changes to, to make the ordinance work the way it was originally intended. We also discussed, we reintroduced ourselves to the demolition, the amendments to the demo, the existing demolition review ordinance. We did not take any votes on that, on that item. This was something that has been discussed for several years, actually. Last discussed, or actually was to be, had been discussed on October third of two thousand and nineteen. It wasn't that age because I'm being ran late, and we're finally, for a variety of reasons, including our, our capacity issues and personnel issues, able to pick it up this past week. So we will, the minutes do a good job of explaining the discussion there. Folks can take a look at that. We also discussed proposals to the, the adult-use cannabis ordinance, specifically whether we ought to require more transparency. The consensus of the committee seems to be that yes, we should. There, the, the application that, that, folks have to submit to the city is quite detailed. It actually includes a great deal of transparency. The problem is, no one can see it in the public. And the administration has told us for several months that if there's a Freedom of Information Act request, then they'll, they'll go through and redact those applications and make them make public. I've been arguing for a long time, and, and other members have been arguing that those ought to be available to the public without having to go through all that, all those hoops and all that rigmarole and red tape. So the administration, Mr. So the administration, Mr. Director Parekas, did indicate his agreement that it made sense to make information available at the outset, and so I hope, we all hope that we will see that happen. And then the other change, proposed change, was to reconsider whether some of the residents should be considered at the same preference level as economic empowerment applicants. The ballot initiative was very much focused, as we all know, on economic empowerment applicants and helping out folks who were unduly impacted by the failed war on drugs. Our ordinance, as it was enacted, actually put some of the residents on the same footing. And as we saw, two out of the first three applicants that were approved by the Cannabis Control Commission were some of the residents, and only one was an actual economic empowerment applicant. No knock on any of those particular residents, as Counselor Niedergang himself, who would make him sort of know that they're perfectly good people. But we, you know, we wanted to reconsider whether that's appropriate. So Director Parekas is going to take a look at that. He suggested that we may consider extending the two-year preference period, which is slated to end this fall. And we may also want to consider, you know, a preference for some of the residents, but that's something that is maybe slightly less of a preference than the economic empowerment applicants. So that's still a discussion to be had, but the, that was the crux of the discussion. So with that, I request that the report be submitted, subject to replacing the proposed amendments to the stormwater and engineering ordinances with the items in, with the revisions in item 31. So, Mr. Clerk, however, we have to do that. That's what I want to do.
All right, so Counselor Davis moves to approve the committee report with amendments. And while the clerk figures that out, Counselor White, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Chair Davis. On page 14 of the draft that was sent to us, the redlined version, where it deals with conversion permit expiration, the provision that had, it appears that it permitted a lease to a bona fide lessee, which was struck. And I was just wondering the rationale behind that.
Yeah, let me just scroll into that quickly. So the, the reason there was that, if you look at the language, this, this provision actually is an exception. And so if the, if the unit has not been sold to a bona fide purchaser within two years after the date, then the permit wouldn't lapse. But they didn't want the, they didn't want the owner to effectively be able to sort of keep a conversion permit alive just by renting it out to someone who would then have no benefit of the ordinance, no benefit of the notice, no benefit of anything. That was sort of, frankly, it was just an error that we made when we drafted it. You know, if it's, if it hasn't been sold, then the intent was that the permit wouldn't lapse. But if it's just leasing it to somebody else, renting it to somebody else, who would then effectively, it would effectively be a way to get around the ordinance. And so that was, that's why that was struck.
Okay, through the, through the chair. Because my concern was, would that actually act as a disincentive for someone to lease property if you convert it to condo and instead basically be an incentive to then sell it? Through the chair?
Well, so this only, through the chair, to Counselor White, this only comes into place if a conversion permit has been granted. And the, if, you know, if it wasn't sold and they opted to lease and the permit lapsed, then they would have to go through the process again. The idea is you would then be protecting that tenant with the, all of the intended protections under the ordinance.
Okay, through the chair. No, I understand that, but I was just wondering, what if someone decided they didn't want to sell it and they just wanted to lease it because they've gotten it? So this would eliminate any, like, incentive to leasing? So I'm just wondering if it has, like, all right.
Yeah, I mean, through the chair, I think I would disagree because if they decided they didn't want to sell it, then they could not sell it and they could lease it. And if the permit lapses, then they can keep leasing it. And if they ever want to sell it again and that permit has lapsed, they go through the process again and provide that tenant with notification and all the protections that are provided in the ordinance.
Okay, through the, I understand the rationale behind it. Again, that was my concern, not being a member of the committee. So I wanted to make sure that that was, you know, that was vetted because actually somebody raised a concern to me about that, and, you know, given the current situation of, you know, broadcasting, et cetera. And then I guess through the chair, the other one which deals with, which had dealt with a prior owner, and is that just language smithing? It's basically on page two, under definitions?
Yeah. Let me go back to that. I think, with my recollection on this, was that that was, as it was drafted, it's effectively impossible. And if it was a prior owner, then they were no longer the owner and it, they wouldn't be charged in the property, so it wouldn't make any sense.
Okay. Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate Chair Davis's explanation. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the committee report? Here are none. We're going to do one vote on accepting the two reports, with the second one amended by replacing the SOAR engineering ordinance with agenda item 31 and replacing the condo ordinance with agenda item 51. Is everyone clear on that? Here are no discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
On that motion, which was so eloquently stated, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes, I'm pleased to vote favorably on any eloquently stated motion.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you for catching that. Mr. Clerk, Mr. President, my vote is yes.
Counselor Scott.
I need to get more eloquent. Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
I prefer elegant, but yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of accepting those two committee reports, the second one, item number 24, being amended as described. Which brings us to the ordinances now.
Yes, roll call vote on the ordinance?
The first, as was sent out to the councilors, is a roll call vote on enrolling what appears now in agenda item 31, which amends the ordinances in Chapter 11, Articles 6 and 7, with respect to sewer and engineering duties. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councils have voted in favor of enrollment. That ordinance has been enrolled and now ordainment of that same item is before the council.
On ordainment.
On ordainment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Uh, yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, again, all 11 councils are in favor. That ordinance has now been ordained. And that brings us to the enrollment of agenda item number 51, which amends the condo, condominium cooperative review ordinance. On enrollment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of enrollment of the amendments to the condo cooperative review ordinance. That has been enrolled and now ordained before this council.
On ordainment.
On ordainment, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils are in favor. That condo cooperative review ordinance has now been amended.
All right, next item.
Mr. President, item number 25 is a report of committee on public health and public safety, which met as a committee of the whole on May 4th.
All right, let's take the other one up as well, item number 26.
And item 26 is a report of the same committee, meetings committee of the whole, the following week on May 11th.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. So both meetings occurred, as noted, all members are present. There are, the minutes are extensive and detailed, as always, so I won't go, I won't elaborate. The, there are slide decks that are available through the city council website showing the data presentations that were provided. They're very informative, and I encourage folks to take a look at those, tune in next Monday to see the latest. Much of this information, as always, is also provided through the administration's communications, which have been excellent. Couple of things I want to just make sure that we call out. At the meeting on the, on May 4th, and frankly, at the following meeting as well, there was extensive conversation about the mask requirement order, and particularly about how that will be enforced and what, how that enforcement might impact communities of color in particular, as well as children. Councilors made strong arguments, and that's my personal interpretation, that there is a concern about any, any order like this during a time of emergency and how it will impact different members of the community differently, whether that be in communities of color, more vulnerable communities, or any of the children, as we know, it applies to children at a very young age. The administration, effectively, essentially, the response was, this, we're following the best advice being provided by the CDC, and the emphasis is on encouraging people to enforce, to comply, and that the fines are a last resort and would only be, we would only resort to that if there was a, you know, a deliberate refusal to comply. How exactly that is interpreted, hard to say, but that was, that was essentially the response that we received. So the, the other item that I wanted to call out on, from the meeting of the, so with that, I'll submit, I'll request that the meeting on the 4th be, the minutes of the meeting on the 4th be accepted as submitted. If we could then lay that on the table and I'll get to the meeting on the 11th. Mr. President?
Counselor Davis moves to submit, accept the committee reports as submitted on the item. Counselor Strezzo?
Mr. President, I think we, if we could, we could lay that on the table and I'll request that the meeting of the 11th be accepted as well. We could take a.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were going to go ahead. Go on.
Glad to hear you, glad to hear you. You're riveted by my, by my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Every day is one of the next.
It's Friday, right? So on the, the only thing I want to note, again, the minutes of this meeting are extensive, and I encourage folks to take a look at them, as well as the dataset that's available online. The one thing I think might be worth noting for folks, there was some discussion of the, of the city's testing policy, and it's making tests available to everyone. And it was asked specifically, does that really mean everyone? Do we have enough tests for everyone? How does that work? I know I've received some questions about that, and I'm sure some other councilors have as well. Director Kress explained that the original, I think it was 3,700 or so tests that was mentioned in the, in the original press release about citywide testing, that was the first batch. We are receiving additional tests, sort of, you know, as they become available. So as of, so far, we have not had a problem with testing capacity because, because the test requires an appointment. That is sort of one way that the city is managing the supply and demand. And so everyone is indeed encouraged to go take a test. And, you know, if the capacity is not available, that appointment might be pushed out a bit. And that's sort of how they're managing that. So for folks that, I know I heard some, folks said, I'm not going to go test because we only have some editing and they probably need it for other folks. They're managing that. They understand that we're getting more tests as they come in, and we're using that scheduling system to manage the capacity as well. So the data is good to have. The city does want to know, collects as much data as possible, so if folks are able, go get yourselves tested. With that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
Counselor Davis moves to accept the committee report as submitted on the two committee reports. Any discussion? Here are none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on approving the committee meetings.
This is on the approval of the two Public Health and Safety Committee reports. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of that motion. Those two Public Health and Safety Committee reports have been approved.
All right, next item.
Item number 27 is a report of committee on traffic and parking, which met on May 13th.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Present were councilors Klingon and Ballantyne and myself. Most of the meeting focused on a, an update from the Director of Mobility, Brad Rossin, on their activities. Ms. Wells produced amazing minutes within, it seemed, minutes of the end of the meeting. I reviewed them today. They're very detailed and accurate, but I am going to go over a few things, since they've actually been hard at work. And the last thing, it seems, we and the community have been thinking about is traffic and parking, because those problems seem to have disappeared with the coronavirus. It's been a small miracle. Mr. Rossin agreed that the pandemic has changed how the community moves around, but the mobility division, he said, continues to operate with the same sense of urgency. They've been working steadily in four areas, policy, finance, design, and construction. In terms of policy, they've been supporting and meeting with the Vision Zero Task Force, the Bicycle Committee, and the Pedestrian Transit Advisory Committee, all of which have met and continue to work. The Traffic Commission, as I reported, also is continuing to meet. In terms of finance, they've written a number of grants that have been successful to fund Blue Bikes programs, for example, and you'll see on tonight's agenda, there's a $325,000 grant from the MBTA to pay for the city's public safety expenditures in terms of the bridge closures. In terms of design, the city's annual paving projects, such as on Holland Street and College Avenue, have been delayed, but the community and technical design processes are continuing to move forward. There's a number of other paving projects which design is moving forward, including the Powderhouse Rotary Project, where design is happening to make significant singleization and pavement marking changes to change. and pavement marking changes to change that whole rotary, which is one of the most dangerous areas in the city. In terms of construction, mostly, there have been small projects due to impending budgetary constraints. The priorities are these quick build solutions, such as flexible bollards, and movable planters, and a lot of paint, and flex posts. In addition, the mobility division has been working with the GLX team on the Green Line Extension Station areas, and there will be a focus on making the streets safer in those areas with dedicated bus lanes and bicycle infrastructure where possible. Mr. Rossin did say that design and development for major capital construction project in the Gilman Square area, streetscape there is underway, and they're almost at the stage of twenty-five percent design documents for those, for those changes in the Gilman Square area. He said this is an important milestone, because they're hoping to compete for federal and state construction funding to enable that street work to go forward. As you may recall, after the Great Recession of two thousand and eight, there was a lot of public works money available from the federal government, which the city of Surwo was able to take advantage of, because we had a number of streetscape projects that were already well into the design process. So they're moving forward on that in mobility, as well as around the other station areas. They're moving forward, working with the Green Line Extension Team to design the streets there. The, the other thing that I would just mention is that we had a rather detailed discussion about the Powerhouse Boulevard Protected Bicycling Lane Plans that had been discussed at great, in great detail and at great length in previous years, Counselor Ballantyne raised this issue. And Mr. Rossin noted that while work with standing city committees, such as the Bicycle Committee, has been able to move forward, larger community involvement presents challenges in terms of how to involve and engage the full range of people in the community. So the usual methods of flyering and meetings at the West Surwo neighborhood school, for example, can't be used in the pandemic, with the pandemic restrictions. He stated that stakeholder and resident engagement for questions about bicycle facilities, traffic calming, and other issues are still needed more for Powerhouse Boulevard, but he said that the mobility department has yet to figure out what they consider to be a satisfactory way to hold those discussions. In other words, they're concerned that virtual meetings would exclude key stakeholders, and that they would not reflect the full range of views from the community. So we didn't get a concrete answer on that, they're certainly thinking about it in mobility, but it's not clear what will happen with the Powerhouse Boulevard project. So that is my report from the meeting, there were a bunch of other items discussed as well, which you can see in the minutes, and I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Counselor Niedergang moves to accept the committee report as submitted, any discussion on the item? Hearing, hearing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is on acceptance of the Traffic and Parking Committee Report, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White. Counselor White.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils are voted in favor of that item, that committee report has now been accepted.
All right, next item.
The next item is item number twenty-eight, which is a request to the mayor requesting approval to appropriate seventy-six thousand dollars from the WIN Encore Small Business Assistance Stabilization Fund for technical assistance for small businesses impacted by COVID-19.
Any discussion on the item? Hearing no discussion, the item will be referred to the Committee of Finance.
Item number twenty-nine is a request to the mayor requesting approval to create the Alpine Street Stabilization Fund and accept a payment to the fund of ten thousand dollars from the Two to Thirteen Alpine Street LLC for open space improvements.
Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, the item will be referred to the Committee of Finance.
Item number thirty is a request, the mayor requesting confirmation of the reappointment of Joseph Lynch to the Licensing Commission.
This item will refer to confirmation of appointments.
Item number thirty-one is a communication, oh, I'm sorry, thirty-one has been dealt with. Item thirty-two is a communication from the city clerk informing the, the city council that counselor-at-large Kristen Eastrezzo was administered the oath of office on May fourth, replacing former counselor-at-large Stephanie Hirsch, who resigned on April thirtieth.
All right, welcome to your first full council meeting, Counselor Strezzo, you can't see these people in attendance, but they're all giving little clap emojis. This item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
Thank you.
Item number thirty-three is a communication with the director of the council on aging, submitting a response to a board order with an update on the assistance to senior residents in this time of COVID-19.
This item will be placed on file and laid on the table.
Brings us to some new business.
Well, before we do that, why don't we do a roll call vote on the placed on files?
Very good, this is, this is a roll call vote on placing the communication about Counselor Strezzo, and placing the communication of the director of the council on aging on file on, on those two actions, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, eleven councils are in favor of placing those two items on file, so that has been done.
Next item.
Brings us to item number thirty-four, which is an item of new business.
President.
Yes, Counselor White.
I move to waive the readings of items thirty-four through forty-five, and approve them this evening, the clerk assures me that everything is in order, unless any of the members of the council have an objection or concern with respect to any of them.
Counselor White moves to take items number thirty-four through forty-five, waive the readings and move for approval, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on approving the business license renewals that appear in items thirty-four to forty-five. On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, eleven councils are voted in favor, those business licenses have been renewed.
All right, next item.
Item number forty-six is a communication from the director of the Chamber of Commerce, submitting comments from the chamber regarding the demolition review ordinance in committee.
All right, this item will be laid on the table, placed on file, with copy to legislative matters.
Very good. Item number forty-seven is an order submitted by Counselor Rosetti and Counselor Niedergang to the Director of Inspeccional Services to explain why stop work orders aren't accompanied by a fine.
Counselor Davis would like to sign on, any discussion?
Mr. President, yes, please, I'm sorry I didn't give you a, 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 thank you, sir. I just wanted to explain that what brought this is, I actually spoke with the Director of Inspeccional Services, I've been speaking with him quite a bit lately, and he is aware that I, with this order has come in, but what prompted it is, there's one case in the city that I have spent the enormous amount of hours on in trying to help the abutters who have been aggravated beyond aggravation, and this project began in two thousand and seventeen and is still not completed to date. As a result, I used, I tried everything in my power to get through to 311, ISD, police department, et cetera, et cetera. In the last couple of months, I suggested to the neighbors, just use me, tell me first, and then I will get to the proper authorities and make sure everything is happening, because they were losing faith in the process. Recently, I asked for a report of this particular project to assure the neighbors that there in fact have been fines, or there in fact have been citations, because that's what I was assured. And I received the report the other day, many pages long, many lines, and the only fines that have happened is in the last couple of months, because of, honestly, I feel as though it's because of my being on top of this, and it shouldn't be that way. So the neighbors, it's a public document, the neighbors are seeing this, they are beyond livid, and in this document, it's showing there were multiple stop orders, stop work orders, but no fee or fine assessed to it. So again, go back to two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, when multiple calls were made, multiple inspectors had to go out, there was never a fine. There are some lines that there's no documentation of what even occurred during the date they went out there. Now, the current Director of Inspeccional Services was not in this role back then, but he is, he agrees with me that something went amiss, and he is willing to sit with us and discuss this. My concern is, is our ordinance written such that if a stop work order is given, they cannot get a fine with it? That makes zippo sense. I want to apologize to all the constituents, if they happen to be listening to this, because I led them down the wrong path, I assured them that it was being, that the developer was being fined, and they were not. So there's a lot more to this, but that is the reason for this, for this order and this ranch, Mr. President, and thank you.
The entire council enthusiastically signs on to this order, and let's see, Counselor Niedergang wanted to comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to, I want to thank and commend Counselor Rosetti for the work that she's done on this, this is actually in my ward, and I spent a huge amount of time dealing with this developer as well, around this particular project. Everything that she says is absolutely true, I've dealt with three different directors of inspeccional services around this, and there just seems to have been, since I've been on the council, a disinclination on the part of inspeccional services to find problem developers up the wazoo. And that's the, you know, we need to use every tool that we have, and fines especially, to try to rein in some of these cowboys out there who simply don't care about the neighbors in the community. So thank you, Counselor Rosetti, for, for getting involved in this fight and for moving it forward.
Counselor Rosetti, do you want this item approved or referred to committee?
Mr. President, please refer it to committee, and I hemmed and hawed over which committee, you decide, sir, I'll make sure I'm present to listen in, if it's not a committee, I'm assigned to.
One second.
I'd say public health, but we're kind of occupied in public health right now, let's refer this to public utilities and public works, and the item's laid on the table for approval.
Item number forty-eight is a communication submitted by Counselor McLaughlin in his capacity as president, conveying information regarding appointments.
So I have a few communications today, this one I have more positive news than the other two committee, the other two communications. People asked for me, counselors asked for me to speak with members of the appointment board that screens applicants for recommendations for the mayor, and I spoke to Alex Jean Birdy, who's a Ward One resident, those on this committee, he broke down the process to me of how they make selections, it's detailed in my communication, and the summary is, I feel like they do have a good process, it's better than the process we had before, maybe it's not perfect, but I am confident that this council, we have our own process, and we've proven that we're willing to say no to people, which has not happened in the past, so I think counselors should feel confident and feel empowered to vote yes or no on any candidate they want. And I also highly recommend, I did ask Annie Connor and the city to reopen the application process, and I highly encourage counselors to have people submit applications. There were only fourteen applications in the entire, in the entire city, they interviewed eight people, and they picked four, it'd be great if we could have a lot more there. So on this item, I see Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I just want to say thank you first for this update, and also for the following two items, for you following through on these questions of our colleagues, and also for providing the written response that goes in the record so that people can, can refer to that in future, I really appreciate that, I think it's well done. Just specifically about applying for this position, now my understanding through confirmation of appointments is that frequently people who are serving in one capacity of the city will apply for another position, another board, just because that captures their interest. It would be possible, in theory, for, say, an alternate to the planning board to apply for the full planning board position, correct?
Um, so, I'll first state that I asked Alex about this specifically, about the Rob Buchanan position, and he said he did not recall why he was picked as an alternate as opposed to a regular candidate, there was not much of a deliberation on it, it was just a decision they made based off the applications and their priorities. So it would be possible for someone to switch from an alternate to a regular member, but the mayor would have to make that recommendation and send it to us for approval again. So this whole screening process is something the mayor created, I feel because of a lot of the complaints that we've had about planning and zoning, and all sorts of appointments in the past, so he has this three-person committee making the decision, but ultimately, it is his recommendation for approval that comes before us, so we, they would have to turn up the process, he could in theory say, yes, Rob Buchanan is now a regular committee member, and then we'd vote on that, in which case we'd have to approve an alternate, but either way, I, I feel like that's up to him, and then it's up to us to decide whether we support that or not.
Absolutely agree, thank you, I just, but if the intention is to continue, if the mayor's intention is to continue using the, the committee as it's currently constituted, and as it's currently receiving recommendations from it, I, it just occurs to me that that would be a plausible path forward for Mr. Buchanan, would be to reapply for the next round with his current service.
They would have to open up the application process first, so that hasn't happened.
Well, the, the position is vacant, isn't it?
There is a vacant position, and they could, in theory, they, they had eighteen applicants, or fourteen applicants, they selected eight people for interviews, so they could, in theory, just pick the fifth person, the fifth place person in that wheel, so I've asked for them to reopen it so we can get more applications, and that's what I really, I really encourage the counselors, to encourage people to apply, because the more people that apply, the better candidates, the better selection process will have.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, any further discussion on the item? Hearing none, the item will be laid on the table and placed on file, next item.
Item number forty-nine is communications submitted by Counselor McLaughlin in his capacity as president, conveying information regarding the reopening of schools.
All right, so these next two items are communications in my capacity on the school committee, I encourage people to read them, they're very brief, and I'll be very brief, and unfortunately, the answer to a lot of these, as we don't know, there's a lot of uncertainty because of COVID-19 about how schools are going to reopen, Counselor Ballantyne placed an order requesting information on this, and Uh, Council Valentine placed an order requesting information on this, and I asked a specific question about, uh, DESI and their communications with the municipalities, and unfortunately, they have not communicated, um, thoroughly on what's gonna happen in the summer or in the fall. Uh, so there's lots of, just like our budget process as well, we're waiting a lo- on a lot of state guidance. Uh, so as of right now, there's not much to report, but whatever I do have, I placed in the committee report, and we, the school committee and myself, we just ask for patience for people, and it's really trying times and situation people have never dealt with before within our lifetimes. So, and I will, I will just add to that, in lieu of any DESI guidance, the city, the school department is coming up with their own guidance, uh, to deal with COVID-19 in the fall, but they really do need that DESI guidance, and they do believe it's coming, but it's not here yet. Uh, so any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion, the item will be placed on file and laid on the table. Next item.
Item number 50 is a communication submitted by Councilor McLaughlin in his capacity as president conveying an update on the school committee's negotiations with the Somerville Teachers Association, U N I C, paraprofessionals.
So that, this is just another brief communication, um, and it's in the, I, we don't know category. I'm very disappointed that this, you know, COVID-19 has affected, uh, contracts for people who really are deserving and need money, uh, but the school committee just made a decision to withdraw the previous, uh, offer that was led, that was given to the, uh, Teachers Union. And that was based on the decision of, of the uncertainty of what's gonna happen in the future, uh, how much money we're gonna have, and what can be done. So I encourage people to read the committee report, but the basic idea is we don't know. I don't take this personally as a sign that we're going to increase or decrease the contract or expect people to expect differently. It's just that we don't know, and we need time to get through this, uh, before we make some serious decisions. Uh, so any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion, the item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 52, which is a request to the mayor requesting approval to create the Union Square Community Benefit Stabilization Fund and accept a payment to the fund of $214,000 from the US2 Master Developer escrow account for COVID-19 pandemic-related economic relief efforts.
Any discussion? Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask for approval of this tonight. Uh, as you may recall from the Finance Committee, uh, discussion, this is a payment that was placed in escrow, uh, at the onset of the master developers' process. This is simply moving a large portion of that initial escrow payment into a dedicated fund so that we can, uh, put out and fund the RFPs for the two community partner positions that were mentioned earlier. So I'd like to ask that be approved tonight rather than referred.
Any further, uh, Councilor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion on the item? Hearing no discussion, um, let's lay this on the table and, uh, vote on it after we're done.
Very good. Item number 53 is a request to the mayor requesting acceptance of a $325,000 grant with no new match required from the MBTA for public safety emergency first responder costs.
Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, this item will be referred to the Committee of Finance. And now we'll do a roll call vote on any items laid on the table.
Mr. President, if you would indulge me, could I request a separate roll call vote on item 52, which, uh, is creating a stabilization fund?
Sure. Uh, what other items do we have for a roll call?
There's, uh, items, there's several items to be approved or placed on file, and there's two items we haven't gotten to yet, two late items that have been submitted.
Okay, uh, so let's do a roll call vote on all items laid on the table except for item 51.
All right, this is a roll call vote on approving item number 47 and placing item numbers 46, 48, and 49 and 50 on file. On that motion, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Valentine.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Cost, Mr. President, all councils are in favor of that item. That motion has been approved.
All right, on the next item.
Then the next item is item number 52, which is a, a roll call vote on creating a community, a Union Square Community Benefit Stabilization Fund and accepting a payment to the fund of $214,000. On that item, Councilor Klingon.
Clerk, any, any discussion on the item before we vote? Hearing no discussion, uh, please call the roll.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Valentine.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Again, Mr. President, with all, uh, councilors voting in favor, that item has been approved.
Very good, um, do we have any late items?
Mr. President, there are two late items that have been submitted. Excuse me, the first is a zoning ordinance proposal submitted by Councilor McLaughlin, uh, requesting amendment of the zoning map to place 31 Tough Street, uh, into the urban residence zoning district.
So this is related to the, uh, tough street development I was spoken, speaking of, uh, this item will refer to land use.
Mr. President?
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to mention on this, um, that this will be on the agenda for a joint public hearing next Tuesday, along with a number of map amendments that were submitted by property owners in Somerville. Um, I, I will send, um, the, the agenda will be posted tomorrow, and I'd ask that, uh, all, all councilors take a look at that, um, and feel free to reach out to me as the chair, um, uh, in anticipation of that, uh, public hearing on Tuesday, um, and reach out if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next late item.
So, Mr. President, just to clarify, that item has been referred to Committee on Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board for that hearing.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Very good. And finally, Mr. President, we have an order submitted by Councilor Valentine to the Director of Communications and the Director of Economic Development publicize that one of the best ways to support small businesses providing takeout service is to call them directly, to place your order, and, and then pick up your takeout order instead of using a third-party delivery service in order to, uh, help the community of small businesses save unwanted costs during the current financial hardship.
All right, Councilor Klingon and Scott, I believe the entire council would like to sign on to this. Any discussion on the item? Hearing no discussion, the item will be approved, uh, and referred to, uh, Public Health and Safety, and we'll call a roll on that.
Mr. President, on, uh, on the approval of this order, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Valentine.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all of the councilors in favor, that item has been approved.
Are there any more items before us?
Mr. President, there are no further items before the city council this evening.
All right, so no further items before us. Councilor Strezzo moves to adjourn. Uh, please call the roll on adjournments.
On adjournment, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Valentine.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councilors in favor, this, they voted to adjourn this meeting.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good job. Uh, we are adjourned.